Why don't you start recording and I'll call the meeting to order, okay?
Just started by Laura, you're all set.
All right, welcome everybody and we call this meeting to order. Welcome to the town amendment and select board meeting for December 20th, 2023. Let's start with just reminding everybody that there is going to be a holiday celebration tomorrow night at Galiford's Restaurant from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Downstairs, you can come in the main entrance and you get directed downstairs. It's open to the public. We're hoping to get all employees, appointed officials, elected officials, volunteers, anyone else in town who was a resident who would like to attend and their families. So it's open to everybody. And that's at 5:00 PM tomorrow afternoon. And part of that celebration is to recognize our retiring fire chief Bill Kessler, who was just thrilled to hear that.
They're throwing a party for him.
That's right. So, and with that said, are there any citizen statements or petitions that don't have anything to do with the emergency issues and the storm? Are there any other issues? Anybody have they hand up for anything else than that? All right, then hearing that I'm going to go to item 13 on our agenda, which starts with proclamation of an emergency declaration regarding the winter rain event on Monday, December 18th. If I can just, why don't we start with the chief and Mark Pacino, our emergency management folks, to just give us an overview of exactly what, you know, what transpired, which you want to convey to us?
Okay, so as everybody knows, Monday, we had severe storms. They were unexpected, but the path that Mark was able to track, we were actually kind of in the center of it. So we got hit pretty bad with this one. We're usually, you know, we're kind of on the outskirts of it. There was severe damage all around town, poles down, trees down, a lot of work the highway department had to do. Police Department, Fire Department responded calls. There was enough damage that we consider it a high impact storm for the town of Mendon. We have the issue on Providence Road that we're going to talk about, which is severe and is going to be a costly event. And when you add the totality of everything in the storm, I recommend that we declare state emergency in the town of Mendon. It will enable us to act faster on the work that has to be done and take care of it in a timely fashion to make sure services are provided to the town. So Mark, do you have anything to add as a deputy?
Sure, just so everybody's aware, when an emergency declaration is made, it is usually sent to the chair of the select board. They'll sign off on it after they agree with it. And it's filed with Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. And this is done in the case that there is a disaster declaration approved by the governor, which then gets forwarded to the President of the United States. So we just wanted to be ahead of the game in the case that we were going to be looking at on type of reimbursement. Unfortunately, at this time, we did not, the state did not meet the threshold of the amount of damage required to do a disaster declaration. So there is not one in place at this time. That doesn't mean it can't change, but for now, there was not one in place.
So is it incorrect for us to declare it locally? And then just have it on file so that when the numbers are reached, which I'm sure they will, do we need to wait for this?
No, we're good. It's already been filed. We made the entry. I just need to sign documents to put on file.
Okay, well, I did sign this two days ago. I'll read this publicly. It says, whereas a sudden generally unexpected occurrence or set of circumstances demanding immediate public action has arisen within the town of Mendon, which incident it generally describes as followed. And it says, the town of Mendon was impacted from a rain event that occurred on Monday, December 18th, 2023, which caused significant damage to the town of Mendon and its residents, including but not limited to road damage, tree damage and removal, water removal, and use of town personnel to address these issues and other issues caused by the storm. Whereas the head of state on advice of the director of the town's official emergency management, which I guess is me, has determined the aforementioned incident poses a present and reasonable imminent danger to public health, safety of general welfare of the people or their property, so that it has become necessary for the director to utilize and coordinate the services, equipment, supplies and facilities of existing departments, offices and agencies of the town for the purposes of civil defense, emergency management and emergency functions. And whereas the select board chair has determined that the immediate public action is needed to prevent, minimize or mitigate damage to the public health, safety or general welfare of the people of Mendon and their property, which may otherwise result from the above described incident. And taking the time required to comply with the various state and local procurement laws would endanger the health or safety of the people and their property. I recommend that the state of emergency be declared in the town of Mendon. The people of town of Mendon should be able to depend on the guidance of the select board chair. And therefore, I, Mike Morales, select board chair of the town of Mendon, declare that as of December 18th, 2023, state of emergency exists in the town of Mendon. This declaration of emergency shall remain in effect until further notice is given pursuant to my judgment that the state of emergency law existed. It was signed December 18th, 2023. And as far as I'm concerned, it still continues as we work to repair the damages on the roadway. So that's the first thing. The next issue, let's talk about the repairs to the damage on Providence Street and what our current state is and what's transpired so far. John Dudley, if you can brief everybody.
All right, so as you all know, we get some heavy rain approximately four o'clock on Monday afternoon. The, I think it's not the Willbrook. Sorry, just having a the Spring Brook did over top Providence Road and there was about two feet of water running over the road, which caused significant damage. It undermined the condition of the road, which forced us to close it. As of today, we've filled in the large hole in the road. And we're going to work on fixing the northbound side tomorrow so that we will be able to open one lane of traffic hopefully tomorrow afternoon, if we can get everything in place.
Can I ask if it was inspected by the state?
Yeah, the state did come in this morning. Mass DOT civil engineer came in to determine that what is left of the road is still usable. And that would allow us to then hopefully open it back up. To passenger vehicles, passenger vehicles only, no heavy vehicles.
So that means passenger vehicles means automobiles, light trucks and school buses, correct?
Correct.
So when do you think those repairs will be complete so that you can open them?
We can make this happen by tomorrow afternoon. We just have some stuff we have to finish up down there tomorrow morning and then we should be able to get it open.
Right. Any members of the select board have any questions?
The only question I'd have maybe is to Chief Curzy is when we think, Mark, that's great turnaround, number one. In terms of back at the school and the buses, are they, any chance we can get them through Cemetery Street on their routes in the morning and afternoon?
We've already been done.
Okay.
So there's already been a plan in place immediately for public safety. Ambulance, police, we have, we enacted a plan immediately for that. If there's an ambulance call, I think it happened today, actually. Police officer will go to one end of Cemetery Street, close it down and then get the ambulance through. The same thing the very first day with, first day yesterday. With the schools, we have a midnight shift, about 6:30, school companies calling, closing off Cemetery, we're getting them through. Again, same thing this afternoon, they called us, we got an officer down there, we're getting them through. So at least the schools doesn't have travel 30 minutes around. It was a big problem there. So doing what we can right now to at least get emergency through in the schools.
All right, let's move on to, well, first of all, let me just say, it's my opinion. I think all of the emergency personnel have rapid turnaround. And I don't think in getting the state here and making sure it was safe and repaired properly was, is tremendous. But now I'd like to talk about is moving forward, once we do get this road repaired, what the proposal is for traffic. So Chief Curzy, what your?
So I had a few proposals prepared last night, but I met with a lot of highway surveyors and fire chiefs today, deputy fire chief, and talked about the most logical proposal right now with what we're dealing with. And with Providence being a high travel road, especially during the business hours, there were several options, but the one that we're going to pursue right now and recommend to you is we make Providence Road from the area of Cemetery Street to Hartford Ave East, northbound travel only, a one-way essentially temporary on that area. So we'll allow everybody northbound to get all the way to Hartford Ave East. Then they can continue on their way. So they won't be disrupted anyway. And traffic will be normal commute there. The disruption will be on the way back. We'll post two cement, two to three cement jersey barriers at Hartford Ave East and Providence to not allow that right-hand turn or left-hand turn if you're coming up Hartford Ave East. We'll put detour signs, electronic signs and route them to Cemetery Street. We'll utilize the one-way on Cemetery Street with another detour sign there. They'll loop around. They can come out and take a left if they're going towards Blackstone. If it's the people who live in that section, they're just going to have to loop around. They'll be allowed to take a right, obviously, and go northbound. We'll put additional jersey barriers, the highway department's working on it, at Vincent Road, same thing, proper posting. Road closed for southbound travel. You'll come out of Vincent, look straight ahead, detour to the left, and then you'll follow the detours as you go around back to Cemetery Street. I think that's the safest route. That's what I'll recommend. That's what I recommend as the emergency management director and the deputy. We agree on that. And then as the police chief, I absolutely probably wouldn't do anything else. We did consider doing two-way traffic, putting two stop signs or lights, but just because of congested traffic, it doesn't make sense. And then with New Year's Eve coming up and Christmas Eve, you do have increase in accidents at the night, at nighttime. And at that time, add more confusion there and allow more traffic to go in. We're asking to trouble down there.
Right, so just, just so I understand clearly, the affected area on Providence at Spring Brook is going to be down to one lane?
One lane, one-way travel.
And, and it'll, the traffic is going to be one-way headed north, heading towards town from Cemetery Street up to the intersection of Hartford Ave East and Providence?
Correct.
Okay, so anybody who is coming out of Ashkins or Vincent, they're going to have to take a left and go towards town. They will not be able to take a right because that'll be one-way. And I'm assuming that's going to be strictly enforced?
Yes, we'll have extra offices there in the beginning. We'll try to, to that the budget, if we need more money later on, we'll talk about transfers in the spring.
And all the signage will be put in place?
Yeah, that's what we're going to, we're going to get on the sign boards and then I imagine the highway department will get on all the detour signs, posting all of that. And that's what they take into their realm to do that. And then I'll inspect it afterwards with, deputy director will make sure that it meets the plan that we proposed.
Any discussion amongst the boards members? Any of the board members have any questions or comments?
Just impressed, this is happening so quickly. It's, I think, great, great work because I know this has been a great disruption for a lot of the town.
Well, Chief, are we going to be able to have the personnel to maintain that? How are we going to handle budgeting for that?
We're just gonna, my plan is just to do it initially. So when we, if we get the go-ahead on Friday or it's Monday even, when we start doing it, maybe during business hours, you know, we'll do an eight-hour or 16-hour shift for a couple of days. And then beyond that, we just let it flow. Once, once the initial impact is there, after that, we'll have enough signage, signs. I mean, the liability there would be on the person who doesn't know how to drive. And I think it would be, would be feasible to spend that type of money to keep someone there until this is fixed permanently. Unless you decide differently as a board and you want to expend that type of money, I can try to find the personnel. I don't even know if I can find the personnel to maintain that.
I personally don't think it's necessary. I mean, if you put the boards up, I know that unfortunately, there have been some people while this was closed, I've been told anecdotally, actually got out of their vehicles and moved the plastic barriers so they could drive through, which I'm, I don't think I'm going out on a limb, but I'm just going to say, the only word I can use is stupid. That's not acceptable. If they were, they were concrete, we would have prevented that, but it's going to be open to the public. There'll be one ways. People need to be responsible and follow the, follow the traffic laws. So I think it's a good question, Jason, but if they can do it, you know, on the normal patrol, there should not be any additional, additional costs.
It's going to cost us about $1,200 a day right now to have officers there. That's for a 16-hour period. That's per officer. So that's why I figured we could probably get away with a couple of days of it. And beyond that, I think the, I think the impact is the first few days when people see the offices there and realize what they have to do. And I don't think it's that they're going to try to do anything they shouldn't be doing. There's going to be some confusion and have the offices there to help. I think that's what it's for in the beginning.
This may be covered later, but just, I know we said temporary solution. I'm sure if people are wondering how long do we think the temporary solution would be in wait, we get to find it.
That was my question as well.
We're looking at having both lanes of traffic open within the next two to three weeks. We are going to have to look at the complete overhaul of this down the road, but for right now, we're aiming for three weeks of the, we have both.
The discussion that we had was that you would do whatever was necessary to get the two lanes open safely, but it's clear that it's going to have to be re-engineered, gone out to bid and properly repaired. So at some time near future, the next 12 months, it'll again, while the whole operation is repaired. So this doesn't happen again.
I think, I think the important thing though is for next, in 24 hours, a lane will be within 24 hours, I mean, in three weeks, two lanes will be open, is best case. And I think for people listening, that's sort of a fairly reasonable timeframe in my mind to start it, get us back to some sense of normalcy. And then the bigger one, like to your point, we'll manage that through the overall highway project flow, get it done.
Right.
I mean, we do have a lot of people on, but for the people listening, that once this does go past the summer and if that temporary fix works, there's going to have to be a long-term plan over the, probably the summer because it's a less disruption, but there will be a disruption there because when you open that up, there's going to be no way of doing it temporarily.
Just, just talking, talking to contractors, that's probably going to be to do a complete rebuild of that. That structure is probably going to be a two to three week project.
All right, I think what I, what I'd ask for, I'm not sure it's necessary, but I think it's important to give, to give the board, the board's vote of approval. I've been looking for a motion to approve Chief Curzy's proposal of turning Providence Road into a northbound one-way from Vincent Road to the intersection of Hartford Ave East until the road is open to a two-way traffic or to, to two lanes on Providence.
Is it from Cemetery to Hartford Ave?
Yes, Cemetery to Hartford Ave East. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Do we need roll call votes?
Pooter, aye.
Janelle, aye.
Rugo's, aye.
God, aye.
Morales, aye. unanimous. All right. Anything else to do with the emergency issues that we dealt with?
Now, just so everybody knows, we're still dealing with it. I was on the phone this recent four o'clock, the national grid today. As you drive around town and see Blackstone Street, Hartford Ave, certain areas where there's still poles that are in half tied to other poles and swinging and there's low wires. We're working with a priority list. Again, it was a statewide event. I think they're pretty thin with their personnel and what they're doing is just make it passable at this point. And then they'll come back and they'll stop plopping in poles and, and even when they get the poles in, there's no necessary, you still might see those hanging there. They'll put a pole in and they'll probably tie and winch it to a pole and and then when they get there, they get there. But it was, it was devastating across the state. I mean, we were at one point in Mendon, 84% without power. We were the highest staff during the storm that didn't have power. So it shows how hard we got.
Well, I would, I would just say that, and ask everybody to keep track of their, of their expenses. I had a few different phone calls with our state representative, Brian Murray. I also was on the call with, with Chief Curzy today, with, with Ann Goldie, with the governor's staff. Although they've stated at this point, they haven't reached an emergency expense threshold. My personal belief is that all the numbers aren't in yet. And I think we probably will get there and we will, we will continue to lobby our state elected officials to give us the aid that we need to help cover the costs to remediate this and complete all the repairs. Thank you all very much. Let's move to number five. Which is consider the appointment of heavy equipment operator, Justin Speck.
And ask the board to appoint Justin Speck to a heavy equipment operator at starting rate of 22. Justin comes to us, he lives in Whiteman Village, comes to us with his CDL Class A and hoisting license. And he has significant truck driving experience. He's also hired on right now as a part-time plow driver for us.
Be looking for a motion to appoint Justin Speck, the full-time position of heavy equipment operator for the Mendon Highway Department, a rate of 2240 per hour. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
God, aye.
Rugo's, aye.
Janelle, aye.
I heard, I heard, yeah, Morales, unanimous. Thank you. Number six, consider appointment historical commission Karen Mead. I have an email from Karen Mead, it says, it's sent to our admin. Laura St. John de P, it says, hi Laura, my name is Karen Mead. I'm ready to express interest in volunteering in the historical commission. I've lived in Mendon since 1986. I've raised my children here, recently semi-retired. I now have the chance to give back to my community. I love the history of this town and would be honored to serve on committee in whatever capacity I'm needed. I look forward to hearing from you sincerely, Karen Mead. Is Karen Mead on the team tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Thank you very much for volunteering. Give everything you'd like to say.
No, I'm just very excited for this. I've been waiting a while for it. So I'm happy to be on board.
Great. I have a motion, please.
Is there, is there anyone on from the historic commission now?
I don't know.
I'm here. I don't know if Kathy is.
I just was wondering if, yeah, any, any input?
I, so I called, this is, sorry, go ahead there.
Oh, I know. I think we're going to say the same thing. The commission has not had a chance to meet. I know you just appointed some other people at the previous meeting, but I believe Kathy spoke with the applicant and I think there's no objections. I mean, I, we're not going to say no to somebody new that wants to get involved. You know, I really appreciate somebody stepping up.
Thank you.
I move to appoint Karen Mead to the historical commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Second.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
God, aye.
Rugo's, aye.
Janelle, aye.
Cooter, aye.
Morales, aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much for volunteering.
Article seven, considering 2024 license renewals. We have, we need to approve some additional licenses for the following. Hanging the receipt of all required paperwork would be restaurant, all alcohol, common vituella, entertainment for New England Steakhouse, Inc., DBA New England Steak and Seafood, 11 X-Street Road. Common vituillas for Ellen M. LLC, DBA Subway, 33 Hastings Street. And a class two dealer license, Native Automotive, 63 Milford Street. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
God, aye.
Rugo's, aye.
Janelle, aye.
Cooter, aye.
Morales, aye. Thank you very much.
Laura, does that, does that finish up the licenses for this year?
It does. There's one more, but we haven't heard anything from them. So I don't know what will happen with that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, I have a, for item eight, I have a letter from, from Roy Ventures Corp., the Endzone Sports Pub. This is to the select board, Roy Ventures Corporation, DBA Endzone Sports Pub at 39 Milford Street, Mendon, Mass. Is requesting an extension for hours of operation on Sunday, December 31st, New Year's Eve, for both liquor and entertainment. The request is for a one-hour extension on liquor and a two-hour entertainment extension. Our current license is till 2:00 AM on Monday through Saturday and 1:00 AM liquor license and 12:00 AM entertainment on Sunday. So being that New Year's Eve is on Sunday this year, we respectfully make this request. Sign Roy Baz. And this, this is a request that has been made previously on years when the New Year's Eve has fallen on the calendar way that it does this year. And I just, we could verify, Chief Curzy, you're here in person, you're approving this?
He, he does a good job of looking at the proper details and staff needs. Does a good job with it.
All right. Looking for a motion?
I move to authorize Roy Ventures Corp., DBA Business, Endzone Sports Pub, 39 Milford Street, to extend their hours of operations on Sunday, December 31st, from 1:00 AM to 2:00 AM for alcohol and from 12:00 AM to 2:00 AM for entertainment.
Second.
All those in favor?
God, aye.
Rugo's, aye.
Janelle, aye.
Cooter, aye.
Morales, aye. Article nine, consider one, one-year reappointment for our current town council of Murphy, Hess, Tumi and Lehane. I'd be looking for a motion to extend the contract another year.
I move to reappoint town council, Murphy, Hess, Tumi and Lehane for a term that will expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
God, aye.
Rugo's, aye.
Janelle, aye.
Cooter, aye.
Morales, aye. All right, 10, let's discuss the key fob system for the town hall in the annex. I don't know which one of you gentlemen are ready to talk about it?
I think that's Jay, right? Dan, I don't know, Dan?
Dan.
Dan, what can you?
Yeah, I don't, I think.
We approved the funding for it, so it's on the agenda to discuss. I don't know if, that was the end of the day.
Yeah, I think David had maybe submitted this. I did talk to him. So they, they did start work. They started pulling wires the other week. It sounds like it's going to be a couple of days. I believe that issue to be discussed is going to be eventually some sort of a policy on fobs, keys, et cetera, which I, you know, I'm not sure we've really had a very formalized policy of who gets keys. And I don't think, you know, necessarily going to make a decision tonight, but I think that's why he put it on the agenda was just that that's probably something that's going to come up.
Yeah, well, the discussion that I had with him recently was that the town will be unlocked and the fobs will, will not be needed during business hours. And, you know, the keys, the keys will be requested back from everybody with a couple of exceptions, obviously. And then what will happen is those who have the fobs will have electronic access. That way, when, once people, rather than having to retrieve keys from people who are no longer employed with the town or no longer are in a position where they should have access, we can limit their access. So, and that policy will be, will be written.
Yeah, there's, so just a slight correction. I believe we're actually ultimately going to rekey the building. There are so many keys out there that we really have no idea who has them. So I think, as you stated, you know, the goal, so the key fobs can be put on a schedule. So even for meetings, the building will unlock. You won't have to worry about issues with the ADA door. Everything will do what it needs to do. Stat, the majority of staff that need it would have a fob. And then I think really the, the physical keys will be limited to just critical emergency personnel that might need to get in if the system has some malfunction. Because again, the beauty of the fobs is everything is logged in conjunction with the cameras. You now have audit of who's entering the building. It should be a massive improvement. Not that we've had any issues, but we don't want to start.
We just add into the system that we had. Dan, Dan, we just added to the system we had and still using Art Pro? Or do you go to a different company?
We're using the same hardware. We ended up using a different company to do the work. But he's basically using the exact same equipment. He's repurposing it. The stuff on the inner doors, as much as he can, he's going to reuse the hardware. They're going to expand the controller, but like the one door that's already hooked up, that one's good to go. It's just hook it up into the new system. And the old library building will be added on. So that basement door will also have a key fob. They, they pulled wire through the new conduit. So basically any opportunity to kind of save costs. And then certainly in the future, we could expand it. We would have to purchase additional controllers, which is the expensive part.
Great, okay, any other questions or comments, I'm sorry, Chief?
Just real quick for the board's information, there is a fire department key box by the front door, and we could put a physical key in there. I would just suggest limiting the number of keys that are handed out, because not only. Do the fobs work as getting you in, but it's a record of who came in at that particular time, so. I, I would suggest, you know, a key maybe here in the police station, behind their locked doors and, and the key in the key box. And if some, if, in some instance that that system does go down. It's a phone call to the police department, a fire can uh, go open that and get somebody in.
Well, but that, and that was my thought about, as far as a policy goes. To leave it here, because even though the station isn't manned at night, because we don't have dispatch anymore. You can suddenly call an officer off the road and they can come in and get access. And that way, they're the ones giving access, so it's, it's an inconvenience, but it's still a way, so I, I think that your point's well taken. The plan is to have the key here, um, I don't know about a, a lockbox or having it on the building, but I think that's.
The key box is on the building now.
Yeah.
Um, and I would also just quickly suggest that uh, you maybe change the locks on those outside doors so that.
Yeah, they're gonna be rekeyed.
Okay.
We're gonna rekey. That, that way, everybody who has a, currently has a key, those keys will no longer work. You know?
Pretty much keyless here in general, the only ones that have keys are, are administrators or supervisors. Any entry-level patrol dispatch is just all fobs. So in case something does happen, I can go in the computer system, delete the fob. In case if they have any fob, throw it away, it's a two-value fob, and you don't have to worry about it anymore.
And I'm sorry, one clarification, I know in some of the communications, it's been said that the fire department has a fob system. We don't, so if I could just put in a. Whatever, advertisement for the new chief, but it would certainly help at the fire station as well at some point in time when funding's available.
All right, well, I would, I would recommend that you uh, reach out to our vendor and ask them to give you a quote. Let's get that done, because depending on how much everything costs, there may be enough money what's already appropriated.
Great.
To get that done.
Yeah, just Dan and get the contact.
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna completely expend this account, unfortunately, it is pretty expensive. I think there might be five hundred bucks when it's done, but. I'll send you the info.
All right, we still get the quote?
Yeah.
Is that, do you have your hand up, or is there someone else who's asking a question?
Uh, well, I had one other comment, but.
I thought there was a question about the uh, liquor license extension to two AM, I caught it on the screen, but. That's, you've already gone beyond.
Right.
I, I was just gonna comment, at some point, um, and I had mentioned this to David, but I, I, it probably is something that the new town administrator. Will wanna talk about, we should look at rekeying the inside of the town hall and just get everything on a master key system. Um, you know, I know Cora, Chief Kessler's dealt with it, when the contractor comes in and we're scrambling trying to find which key opens which office. It'd be helpful to have, uh, you know, one master key that's, again, in a lockbox, but.
It's already been discussed.
Yeah, it, it, it wasn't a lot of money, I think it was like three thousand bucks, we do have a quote, we just, if we can find the funding. He'll, the same company will do it for us.
Right.
And you want keys that can't be reproduced, I mean, there, there's two different prices.
Right, well, so.
Yeah.
That is the one thing.
The chief's key is the only key that gets everywhere.
So the exterior of town hall, we are sticking with a restricted key system, which is what we have now, which, like you said, you, nobody can copy that key unless you have authorization. If we wanted to do restricted keys on the town hall, that twenty-five hundred bucks is gonna be closer to seven or eight thousand, because we have to replace all the hardware.
Do worth it, just this, someone duplicates a master key.
Again, that, yeah.
As I said, it's, it's being discussed, Dan.
Okay.
And there's a, there's a great, great value to limiting who can reproduce keys and who can get into each, each, which, which building. Because there's a lot of sensitive information in there, e- even the thought of doing fobs on the inside. I, I mean, there's a lot of different, it's all being discussed and um, it's gonna be addressed.
But yeah, I just figured I'd mention.
Point's well taken.
Should start capturing that under that general facilities management umbrella.
I agree.
And start to consolidate all this.
Yep.
Stuff.
It was, right, yeah, it's, it was to be discussed, or to be discussed. All right, anything else about, I think we've, we've covered the keys. All right, let's um, capital, capital planning committee, I know it has been advertised. Laura, do you have a, a list of people who've come forward that wanna be on the, the cap, any committee volunteers for that?
I do not, I have not received anything recently. Uh, yeah, I don't have any emails with, or letters, I don't know if Ellen has received anything, but I don't have anything recently.
All right. Do we have any, any discussion, anyone wants to?
Yeah, well, I mean, generally, I mean, Jody and I have caught up a couple of times on this topic, sort of, as we've talked about, and um. We're looking to come back, right, early February with an update, and part of it would be a discussion around the committee. I mean, personally, my thinking right now is, given what I understand. The process and the program to be, we're probably gonna go down dual tracks, one to. Get something done and ready and reviewed as part of this budget process. Whereas the broader, more um. Process that's gonna be in perpetuity, would probably be more geared towards coming in for the next budget cycle. My thought was, we probably wanna think about. A group, not a committee necessarily, because I think there, our bylaw has um, some rules around the makeup of the committee. But I would think we probably wanna get an informal group together to, to review what we're doing for this year.
So what you're saying is that the capital expense and prioritizing and everything to do with it could be done within existing.
Yeah, I'm saying it's in common representation, select board, I think um. Community preservation, since that's a source of funding potentially for some of this type of work. Plus any at-large volunteers, if they're hearing this now. You know, that could, we could make up seven board personnel pretty quickly to kind of dovetail into this budget process. So I know David has sent out the asset inventory form, so we should start seeing information coming back to us, which is a combination of what do we have? And build that into what do we need, and that should give this group something to look at to dovetail into this year's budget, which I think we're talking about. Developing a capital operating budget, not just CapEx, if you will. But I think that's in flux, I wanna come back and give Jody a chance to give us an update, probably in early February.
All right. Is there anything else?
Does the informal working group make sense to people in terms of doing this two-track approach? Rather than waiting to try to get seven volunteers to sign up?
Well, I think if we, if we wanna do it for this current budget cycle, that's what we have to do. Which is, which is the way we did it last, which is, which is the way we did it last year.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. Anything else?
Our last question, that doesn't, and the composition makes sense that I just threw out there in terms of select board, FinCom. Maybe not Ann Mazer, but maybe a CPA representative. Plus at-large, and then if we don't get any at-large, we'll backfill.
Yeah, there's lots, and I, I think it's important to also include um. You know, a, a, appointed, appointed, elected, and actually officials. From the different departments that need to get involved too.
But I think the department heads are gonna be the people that are gonna be reviewing and asking and justifying in conjunction with this. And, and this is just an advisory. This is, they don't have really decision-making.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, but they would, they would facilitate the process with the department heads to make sure, you know, our, our hot box gets in there. At least number one and number two. You know, um, I'd say number one as to what happened to it last week.
Yeah.
It, it, it's amazing how people prioritize. I thought it was good to say one or two, but I had you back on that, come on, John.
All right, um, there's nothing else, we're going to um. At this point, we're going to move into executive session. And I'll, I'll make a motion, move into executive session for purpose two. Ask General Law Chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-two to conduct strategy assessments in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, highway superintendent and town administrator. Also, uh, purpose three, Master Law Thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy in respect to collective bargaining. With the Mass Coalition of Police Union AFL-CIO Local Amendment Permanent Fire Fighters Union Local Forty-nine Thirty-six I AFF. And we will uh, we will adjourn in executive session and will not return. Do we need a roll call vote for that, Morally, aye?
Did you make the motion?
I did.
It's called second motion. And I'll say Baudet, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Morally, aye.
Cooter, aye.
All right, everybody, thank you very much, good night.